Welcome to this October 18th, 2021, meeting of the City of Santa Barbara Sustainability Council Committee. Glad to be here. And if our clerk would take the role, please.
Mayor Maria.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon. Thank you. And Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Thank you so much.
Great. Is there any public comment for items that are not on our official agenda? Anyone in the audience there? Mr. Moon?
We do have six attendees in the audience. I do want to remind the attendees, if they click the hand raising icon, I will go in and unmute you and you will have three minutes to speak. At this time, I do not see any hands raised, so at this time, no.
Okay, we'll close a public comment and move on to our first item. And we've done a little agenda management, I think. Mr. Clerk, we're doing item five, first review of sustainability community programs?
Yes, that is correct. So we will be starting with item five, review of sustainability community programs. And.
Welcome, Ms. Parento.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. We really wanted to take this opportunity to update you on a lot of good work that staff throughout the city are doing to provide opportunities for our community to participate in some of our sustainability efforts. And so today, you're going to get a fairly in-depth review of energy programs, water conservation programs, and solid waste and recycling programs. We really see the three of you as ambassadors to the, to the work that we're doing as you go out and interact with our communities. And so we thought it was important that you have this information and the latest update. So next slide, please. Starting off with the energy programs, next slide. I wanted to bring you up to speed, even though this is not the San Robert Clean Energy Subcommittee, just in terms of sustainability, some of the programs we're offering through Santa Barbara Clean Energy. I'm not going to go into great detail on these because I am providing an update on the program as a whole to full council in November. But I did want to underscore the good work that the Energy and Climate Division has done. As you know, one of the central reasons for forming a community choice energy program was to have community incentives, rebates, and other types of programming. But we typically have to wait until our reserves are funded in order to do that. The team got together and was really proactive in working with key local partners to leverage PR and marketing value to negotiate some rebates and incentives throughout the community before we hit those reserve targets. So we were able to launch our residential community choice energy program with really substantial offerings to our community without any investment on the city's part, but with some really strong collaboration with local businesses. So because we're focusing on the council's carbon neutrality goal, the areas that we design programming around really are around building electrification, vehicle electrification, and energy resilience and energy efficiency. The next slide, please. One of the things we're really excited about, and it's a nice compliment to our recent work around natural gas infrastructure, is the introduction of our induction cooktop demo kits. One of the key limiting factors to building electrification is how much people like to cook with gas. And so we really wanted to give folks the opportunity to try out an induction cooktop and see how it's different than the electric stoves of yesteryear. And so we have five of these kits that are available for checkout at the Central Library through the library's Library of Things programming. And really, we see this as a great community benefit. Next slide, please. In terms of vehicle electrification, you're going to hear a lot more about this from Christian Hafland in a moment. But we really want to improve access to vehicles and help all economic sectors in our community really be able to buy an electric vehicle. And so we have a vehicle purchase incentive through Bunn and Chevrolet, where you can get $1,000 or $1,500 off of a new Chevy Bolt and $1,000 off of a used electric or electric hybrid vehicle. We've also negotiated discounted e-bike memberships through B-Cycle, where Santa Barbara Clean Energy customers get 20% off of their annual memberships. We think B-Cycle is a perfect partner for what we're doing since it encourages active transportation and an electrified transportation source. Next slide, please. We're also working towards council's goal of energy resilience, particularly given our vulnerable position on the electric grid. And so we've worked with a local company, Simplify Battery, that is out of Ojai, to provide a substantial discount on their battery system. They're offering $50 off per kilowatt hour, which is depending on the size of the battery, anywhere from $700 to $7,000 off of the battery system. So really significant. We're also working with some local vendors to discount their solar arrays. We're working with, with really hyper-local vendors. This is something that we really like about Santa Barbara Clean Energy is we can highlight our local small businesses. And we think that's really important. Additionally, we're enhancing the solar and battery revenue streams through the Santa Barbara Clean Energy Resilient Program, which pays more for a net surplus compensation rate annually than Edison. In fact, it pays over double what Edison pays. So really emphasizing that, that resilience is very important to our community. Next slide, please. We're also working on energy efficiency. We're partnering with the Tri-County Regional Energy Network, which is a regional energy network that is managed by the counties of San Luis Obispo, Ventura, and Santa Barbara. They're offering in-home and business energy audits. And because water itself has a high energy impact in terms of delivering water to various sources, we have partnered with the Water Conservation Group to offer a limited amount of these flume devices, which Madeline will tell you more about in a moment. But we really think of this as a neat leveraging of multiple programs to really help people see all of the embodied energy in their daily lives. Next slide, please. And then beyond Santa Barbara Clean Energy, we've been busy at work to provide other resources for the community. We've been successful with on-demand permitting. We're actually the first city in the state to provide on-demand permitting for solar and solar storage projects of a certain size. We've seen over 200 projects come through this permitting avenue, which just greatly reduces the amount of time people are stuck in plan check. We're currently working on standalone storage and have plans to pursue electric vehicle charging and other electrification measures. So more to come on that, but so far, very, very successful. And Building and Safety, I'm very happy with it as well. We're also working, we have two community resource centers. This is in partnership with Southern California Edison. These resource centers are minimally outfitted by Southern California Edison, and they are activated during a public safety power shut-off event. We have these located at both Franklin Center and the Louise Lowry Davis Center. And they're really what I consider a precursor to resilience hubs. And we'll talk about resilience hubs later in today's agenda. But they are there to provide information and small device charging capacity during a public safety power shut-off event. Next slide, please. And then we have energy efficiency test kits that are also available through the Library of Things. We've seen these basically check themselves out. I was talking to the library staff and I said they can't keep them in stock. We have five of these also at Central Library. And they're essentially test kits for your home, where you can check out the energy efficiency of your home. There are a few items in the kit that you get to keep, like a shower head and a light bulb. And they've been very, very popular, which I think speaks to the amount that our community wants to be involved in our resource management work. We're also working on EV infrastructure. I'm not going to go into detail on this because Mr. Hafland is going to go into great detail for you of what we've done. But we're also coupling that infrastructure work with EV parking programs, so behavioral programs that break down some of the obstacles to getting people to choose an electric vehicle, whether that's because they commute from far away and need to charge when they're home, or because they live in a downtown building with no parking or charging infrastructure. So trying to think through how we can break down some of those barriers. As I mentioned, we're working really closely with the Tri-County Regional Energy Network. And beyond their energy efficiency audit services, they also provide all kinds of education and workforce training. So we're really leveraging that to help build our local capacity to push electrification appliances in our homes and businesses. Because that is something that we're noticing is that a lot of the installers just aren't aware of the technology and how to install it and maintain it. And so we're really working with them to make sure that we're building that capacity here locally. And then lastly, we've been doing a lot of work around bilingual community outreach. So something that's been really challenging for us, but also very, very important and central to our work around equity and frontline communities. So we leveraged two very interesting local programs. One is the Community Environmental Council's Climate, Community Climate Ambassadors, which are bilingual ambassadors that are sort of well-poised within the communities and the various networks to spread information and educate bilingual community members. We did that for the Climate Action Plan Outreach Process. And it was very successful. And we were able to get into, you know, in front of a number of groups that we might not have gotten in front of. And so that was great. We're kicking off a bigger effort now with the Promentores, which we're doing through the county's education office. And these are really where we're going to train bilingual ambassadors within our subject areas to go out and really educate and provide outreach for our various programs so that people can really understand them and take advantage of them. So we're excited about both of those things. Next slide, please. I'm going to hand it off to Ms. Wood to talk about water conservation.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name's Water, my name is Madeline Wood. I'm the Water Conservation Supervisor. And today, I'm happy to talk to you through some of our water conservation programs that we have for our community. Next slide, please. So just as some background information, we've had a robust conservation program since the 70s. And for the past decade, our water efficiency measures have been evaluated for cost-effectiveness. And that's based on the avoided cost of additional water supplies. So this may look familiar to you. Council adopted the Water Conservation Strategic Plan as part of the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan this past June and reviewed the draft Water Conservation Strategic Plan last fall. And this plan really prioritizes our conservation measures and lays the foundation to meet our future water efficiency objectives that are currently being set by the state. Next slide, please. So now I want to go through some of our key programs. And starting off with our water checkup program, this is our most popular program. And this is something where we are able to come to people's homes or businesses, wherever they are served water, to help them better understand where that water is going on their property. Sometimes this is a new resident. During COVID, we've had a lot of new people, often coming from the Midwest, where they maybe don't have to water their landscaping. And they move here and they have a sprinkler timer on the wall. And they need some better help understanding how to use that and better understand where the water is going on their property. These are also commonly when we have someone who's experienced an increase in usage. So we have our meter reading staff that will leave a door hanger when they see that the meter reading is higher than usual. And we'll help them try to diagnose where that has gone on their property. So we evaluate the use on the property, help identify leaks. A real key component, if they have a sprinkler timer, is helping them or their gardener better understand that sprinkler timer, because that can control a lot of the, the water bill that people are experiencing. And then we provide information on rebates and programs. During COVID, we've been able to do a lot of this help over the phone or via FaceTime. And we still go in person, especially when it's an irrigation-related item. Next slide, please. For our commercial programs, we have beyond just the water checkup program, we also have a custom survey and incentive program. And that is where we go through the facility fixture by fixture. These are usually our larger commercial customers that are using over 100 billing units a month or more. And we calculate the flow of fixtures. We evaluate if they are, if toilets, for example, are flushing higher than they're stamped on the porcelain. There's a lot of hidden things that we're able to sort of suss out with this detailed review. And then we put it through a cost-benefit analysis to see which programs we recommend moving forward with based on the return on investment and how much the city thinks is cost-effective to possibly incentivize. We've recently had a lot of success with laundromats. There's a picture of the owners of the Mesa Laundromat who replaced several of their washing machines and are working with two other laundromats right now. We also have our restaurant table cards that you've probably seen around town for watering, watering, sorry, offering water only on request. That's something that we had during the drought and a lot of restaurants have continued to do that. So we have that signage available for free, as well as hotel signage, the typical linen and towel signage that you see in, in lodging in terms of, you know, keeping to reuse your linens and your towels during your stay. Next slide, please. So this is the flume rebate, which is something that Ms. Parento referred to. And this is also a semi-local company, which is exciting. It's based out of San Luis Obispo. It actually started as a student project at Cal Poly. So the flume is our most recent rebate, and it's been really popular. We're really pleased with it. And what it is, is two components essentially, where there's a device, which is the gray box, that is strapped with rubber straps around the city's water meter at the street. And then it connects to your home Wi-Fi and it communicates via a smartphone about your water usage. So this is down-to-the-minute water usage. And this will enable you to track your water usage, see when you're irrigating, what, you know, how long a dishwasher load runs and what the total consumption is of that dishwasher. And it also will help alert you for leaks, which is something that's really key. And one tool that we haven't been able to offer until this technology is coming around. We're also moving forward with our automated metering infrastructure. So soon, we'll be able to offer something similar to this to our whole service area. But this is down to the minute. And it's right in your hand, which is something that we have for our flume customers right now. So it's only $75, which is a great discount. It's usually about $200. And we've done surveys for our customers and we get a lot of great feedback in terms of how helpful it's been for them to possibly negotiate with family members in terms of how long showers are, and also just to track leaks and diagnose some issues in their property. Next slide, please. We also have a high-efficiency clothes washer rebate. So typically, those top loader machines that are, can be a little outdated, those use about 30 gallons a load. And typically, these front-loading, high-efficiency, so not all front loaders are, you know, technically high-efficiency. But for the ones that are Energy Star and Water Sense labeled, those are the high-efficiency washers. And they can use around 12 gallons a load. So there's considerable savings there. And of course, there's also energy savings. So we have $150 rebate for those machines. Next slide, please. And then we have a mulch delivery rebate. This is our Mulch Madness crew. We like to promote it a lot during March to tie into the Basketball March Madness. And this offsets the delivery fee for a dump truck load of the county's mulch. And our customers can receive up to two truckloads for free every 12 months, which is a great program that residential, commercial, irrigation, all types of customers take advantage of. Next slide, please. And we have graywater programs. Santa Barbara has been a really great proponent of graywater for many decades. We've helped with the, the state plumbing code and trying to make it more streamlined and also easier for our customers to put in graywater systems and maintain graywater systems. So we have a permit-free laundry-to-landscape system, which is what you see here on the screen. It's really the simplest system because it simply takes the water from the washing machine. And that washing machine pump is what's used to pump it outside and into the drip irrigation system outside. So typically, it's trees that we see that are irrigated, fruit trees, hedges, these woody species are what we recommend. And then we also have a permit-free shower-to-flower system, which is also called the simple system, where there's just one connection, such as a bathtub or a shower, and that goes out to the irrigation system. And we've worked with Building and Safety to develop these programs and to provide a lot of resources for folks who are interested in graywater. So we've done many 101 classes, hands-on workshops, and also trainings for professionals to install these. Next slide, please. This is our Green Gardener program, which has been going on for over 20 years, which we're pleased to say. It's in partnership through the Santa Barbara City College School of Extended Learning, as well as other water providers and the County Water Agency. It's a 15-week class that's taught bilingually, and it's held in the spring and the summer and the fall. So it's generally held year-round. And then we also started an advanced Green Gardener course, which is available every spring and has a really big hands-on component in terms of the lab. Next slide, please. And we have many beautiful demonstration gardens throughout the city. The Firescape Garden, which is next to Sheffield Reservoir and off of Stanwood Drive, that has fire and water-wise landscaping. So that's a great resource for our community in terms of planning out in relation to your home, which areas to plant in terms of keeping them fire-safe, making sure it's low water use and it's maintained at that level. Also, Alice Keck Park, the southern half of that is a low-water-use demonstration garden. This is a picture of the Spencer Adams Park Rain Garden, where one of the downspouts was redirected. And that's to slow and spread and sink that rainwater into the garden so that there's less irrigation water that needs to be applied to it. And then at the Alistair Water Resource Center, we have a recycled water demonstration garden. We also have some partnership gardens. The Association of Realtors on Chapala Street has a rain garden as well. And the Botanic Garden has a water-wise home garden. And if you haven't visited any of those, I do recommend them. They are all beautiful gardens. Next slide, please. We have our ever-popular Garden Wise TV show. This is Billy Goodnick, a local landscape architect, and he is our host. And what we take you through is a variety of local experts that introduce you to different water-wise gardening techniques, irrigation, integrated pest management, design ideas. We also have a feature that is what tree is that, to learn about a lot of the local trees that we have here, common street trees. We have a lot of information about maintenance and design for water-wise landscaping. It's really to inspire and educate people. So that can, those can all be found on YouTube, as well as Channel 20 and Channel 18. Next slide, please. And then on top of that, we have a lot of online resources. As you can tell, a lot of this is geared towards landscaping, because that is where at least half of our water is going these days. It depends on the rainfall. But we really want to encourage low-water-use landscapes. We want to inspire people to plant beautiful low-water-use gardens, like you see here on the screen. So one of our resources is a Waterwise Garden Database, and it has virtual garden tours. You can click on any of these homes, take a look at the plants there, add the plants that you like to a plant list, print it out, bring it to the nursery, show it to your garden designer. It also has some unique lists in terms of what are plants that do well under oak trees? Or I need some sort of vine with purple flowers. And you can have this guided plant search to find really the perfect plant that you're looking for. We also have a watering calculator where you can enter in the site information of your home to figure out how long you should program your sprinkler timer. You know, you put in your soil type, the types of plants, and what your irrigation system is, drip sprinklers, et cetera. And it'll give you an ideal schedule based on where you're located here in the county. We also have our weekly percent adjust, which is our recommended sprinkler timer setting to adjust based on weather. So here in the fall, plants need about a third the amount of water that they need in the summer. And that's something that we update weekly. We also have QR code stickers for people to put on their timer and to update their timer weekly. And we also have a lot of DIY videos, especially during COVID. We saw people who were at home more, who had more of an opportunity to look at how they're using water every day. They were using water every day because they were stuck at home. And so they were looking at ways to diagnose possibly a running toilet or take a look at their sprinkler timer and see how they can better program it. So we have a lot of great resources for that. Next slide, please. And then for youth education, we want to make sure that this conservation ethic, that conservation is really a way of life here in Santa Barbara. So we've had a lot of great youth education programs for many years. We do in-class presentations, musical assemblies, which are really fun. I am not the one singing. We hire professionals for that, but they are really fun. And the songs very much get stuck in your head. And we have some great field trips. Here's a field trip to the Alistair Water Resource Center. We also have a countywide contest, that is the Waterwise High School Video Contest, where high schoolers can create basically a water conservation PSA and submit them to the contest, both in English and in Spanish. And we have our Waterwise Science Fair Award, which is also a countywide award. Next slide, please. And here's just some participation highlights that I wanted to put on the screen. This is from the past five years. This is something that we put into our Water Conservation Strategic Plan in terms of the number of water checkups. As you can see, we've had over 7,000 water checkups. And about half of those were irrigation evaluations, which is a detailed review of the schedule, program by program, and zone by zone, and communicating with the customer in terms of that program and what it entails. We've had over 1,200 landscape rebates issued for water-wise landscaping, almost 2,000 mulch, free mulch deliveries. Our video views, especially during COVID, has really, have really skyrocketed. So we've got over 60 video views. And then through our various water education programs, we've reached 13,500. Through our classes, these are pre-webinar. So these are the in-person classes. We've had over 2,000. And then for our hands-on workshops, which are typically graywater hands-on workshops, rainwater garden hands-on workshops, and drip irrigation, we've had 456 workshop attendees for those. Next slide, please. And then I wanted to end on this slide because I think it really shows the impact of water conservation throughout the city. So this graph sort of tells the story of rain, water use, and population over the last 120 years. So the blue bars on the bottom are rainfall in inches. The yellow bands of highlighting that you see are the different drought periods that we've identified. The blue line that goes up is the population growth. You'll see it sort of levels off a little bit. And then the green line is water production, and that's in acre feet per year. So you'll see that it trends pretty closely with population for many decades. And then during the late drought, or the drought in the late 80s and early 90s, it sort of wobbles a bit and drops down, slowly comes up, but it stays pretty level. And then it drops down from our most recent drought. So the city's commitment to water conservation is really illustrated by these reductions in water use over the past 30 years. So currently, we're using the same amount of water that we were in the late 1950s. But as you'll see, the population has more than doubled since that time. So the city is really a nationwide leader in water conservation. Our community has done an amazing job with water efficiency. The city was awarded the Platinum Level of Recognition for our conservation program by the Alliance for Water Efficiency. And there's only six other water utilities in the nation that have earned that level of recognition. And I really want to thank the city council for their support of this conservation program over the years and thank the community for their efforts to conserve water and really make water efficiency a Santa Barbara way of life. Next slide, please. And I'm here for any questions or possibly at the end of the presentation, if that's what Ms. Parento would prefer us to do.
Yeah, let's let Brian jump in real quickly, and then we'll do questions. Yeah.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Latchford.
Hi. Next slide, please. Should be, there we go. Well, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Brian Latchford. And today, I'm going to cover some of the programs and services that Environmental Services Division offers to the community. As you already know, our curbside recycling, green waste, business food scraps programs are well-established, waste diversion programs. But we also have, you know, many community drop-off facilities contracted through our Waste Hall in Barbour, the County of Santa Barbara for electronic waste, household hazardous waste, and other items that cannot be put in the trash. All these programs help to divert waste from the landfill and to prevent contamination from entering the environment. Our new program, we're about to kick off, which I'm really excited about, after receiving a $100,000 grant from Cal Recycle, is to set up a collection pilot for landscape equipment batteries. The Downtown Home Improvement Center, where these batteries will then be taken by a battery servicer and reused in and reused in new consumer products rather than recycled, which sometimes can actually require more resources than simply reuse. And a few years ago, we launched a single-use plastics reduction campaign. And we're, you know, we created educational resources for our community about simple plastic waste reduction techniques. And we're also developing many more materials this year focused on how community members can prioritize waste reduction and reuse of items first. Next slide, please. Now, a big thing I did want to highlight for our community members, since it's, it's very much a behind the scenes changes, is that our community has made a large investment in a new facility up at Tahigus Landfill called the Resource Center. Now, as we know, landfill disposal of organic materials creates methane, which is a very impactful climate pollutant. And this new facility will take all the food, wet paper and other organic materials from our regular browned-in trash containers and turn it into green energy and compost without the need for separating food into a separate bin at home, which will be a big change, but our residents won't necessarily see it because the trash bin will still be whisked away to a different facility for processing. And by doing this, by having all of our materials and our organics being processed in this way, it'll be a greenhouse gas reduction, it's GHG reduction of 117,000 metric tons. So about taking 29,000 cars annually off the road. Next slide. So another alternative option for residents who would still like to have access to compost at their homes and for their gardens is our backyard composting program, which we contract through this County of Santa Barbara to provide local compost education workshops around town and materials to our residents, as well as discounted backyard composting bins, which run about $45, which is half the price of the retail sale. And I've used this myself and it's really easy to use. And within a few months, you actually do have a nice soil amendment for your backyard. Next slide, please. So now as part of our business outreach team, we have diversion coordinators available to our businesses with educational materials and training. They're available to do waste audits, to see what items are misplaced in business bins, how they can switch to reusable materials to just reduce waste overall and make service recommendations to our businesses to right-size their bin, which sometimes can save money by making sure they can also have adequate capacity for the waste that they generate on a daily basis. A lot of times these are remote trainings or even staff trainings for offices to teach residents and office people, you know, exactly what bins to put to recyclables, what changes in recycling have happened recently, and to make sure people know exactly where to bring their items. Next slide, please. Another program I wanted to mention is Food Recovery, Food Rescue and Recovery. And this program will help to fulfill a requirement by SB 1383 to recover 20% of edible food that is currently being wasted for people experiencing hunger. So all jurisdictions are working together to have this countywide solution in place. And it will be rolling this out for our larger generators, mostly supermarkets in the coming year. And this will be, once the, the structure and the network is set up countywide, will, it'll be available to some of the smaller businesses to actively participate, ones that are, might at the end of the day have food waste that is still edible, that shouldn't go in the trash and can actually go to, to someone who needs it. Next slide. So now I'd like to walk through some of the services made available through our Clean SB Program, which helps to keep our streets and other shared spaces clean and litter-free. So we have, of course, have our bulk item pickup service for residents to call the hotline and, you know, get rid of some large items, as many as they want in one pickup, large couches and all that, just to help keep our streets clean. We have unlimited large appliance pickup. We also call those white goods, there's stove tops, ranges, refrigerators, things with potentially some harsher chemicals, but also just a ton of metal that can actually get recycled from there. And our legal dumping hotline, which has been really successful in trying to get, you know, clean up our streets because we know a lot of the things that end up in the street go right to our waterways and we're going to end up seeing it on our beach. So these programs have collected tons and tons of materials every year and we have a lot of participation with them. Next slide. So now these are some programs that focus on smaller, we call it litter, but illegal dumping is technically larger things and small litter. So these are some of the programs we have. We have a new partnership with United Ways Work for Good Program, which provides work opportunities doing litter cleanup for unhoused Santa Barbara residents. We also have a suite of cleanup materials made available to outside groups who would like to do cleanups and provide, we provide up to $5,000 annually for student fundraising cleanups as well. And with these cleanups, we typically have 12 to 15 larger groups participate in this, but we have a lot of smaller members of our community show up to our, our facility, pick up some, you know, gloves and trash pickers and go out and do their own cleanups. So with our Adopt a Block program, it's a little more structured where residents can use these supplies and equipment ongoing throughout the year within their neighborhood or their, their block per se, that they've kind of claimed is their own. And we recently started running small monthly neighborhood cleanups where residents can show up and help pick up litter in designated neighborhoods. The next one, this is a plug, is, the next is the Saturday at Ortega Park Neighborhood from 9:00 to noon. And these have been really great. We've had upwards of 20 people show up on a Saturday morning, do some cleanup. One of our recent ones, they collected about 20 bags of garbage. So it's been really successful. People liked it and we're going to continue it for now. And of course, we have our annual community cleanup, which has been on hold since COVID, but we're hoping to get that reinstalled soon. Next slide. There we go. So as I already mentioned, we do have many opportunities for youth volunteer and fundraising cleanups. We also have specific Spirit of Service Youth Recognition Award to highlight some of our incredible young people focused on neighborhood improvement and waste reduction. And to wrap my segment on the presentation, I'd like to talk about our free Explore Ecology lessons to local students. So for many years, we've contracted with this local environmental education nonprofit to educate about 2,000 students annually on waste reduction, composting, and they, they even have waste reduction field trips to Art from Scrap, which is a local store focused on reuse of materials. So it recaptures some crafting materials rather than having them go straight to the trash. But recently, we expanded this contract to 2,500 students annually so that we could build in a new lesson, a lesson specifically focused on food waste reduction, which has been really successful so far. And that's the end of my segment. Thank you.
So now, Madam Mayor and council members, Mr. Latchford, Ms. Wood and I are available for questions if you have any.
Okay, super. I was taking notes and you kind of caught me by surprise there. Okay, so waste reduction was the last one with youth engagement. Super. Are there questions from the committee members? And there was a lot there. Thank goodness you're on the job. A lot of good news, a lot of good programming. I wanted to ask for just a little bit more on the, was it Flume? What was that, Flume?
Hi, Madam Mayor. It's, it's called Flume, F-L-U-M-E. It's a, yeah, it's a great device. It's been around for a few years. They launched what's called version 2.0 in the winter, which is when we started our rebate. We started it in February. Thank you, Brendan. So this is a screenshot of the, the app essentially on your smartphone. And then that box is about this big, I want to say, maybe a little smaller than my notepad. And that's something that the homeowner, so you don't need a plumber. The homeowner can just, it comes with these rubber straps and you place it on the side of your meter. And what the app does is it takes you all the way through the install. So you download the app and they say, take a picture of your meter. And then they show you a diagram of how to place it on. And then they have you run a faucet and test it so that it makes sure that it's working for you essentially.
And it's $75 one-time fee or every year?
Through our program, it is $75. Essentially what they do is they, they pay 100. And once they install it, Flume gives them an additional $25 rebate. So we cover half the cost and Flume gives them an extra $25 once it's installed. And the city's only charged for the ones that are installed too. And once that happens, that's it, you're baked in. If people buy this off of the city program, like via Amazon, they do have some subscription services. But if you buy it through the city's website, then it's the $75 after you install it.
Thanks, that's all the water questions I had. And then on the last section, there was some reference to fundraising and cleanups. Mr. Latchford, what, what was that about? There, there's a way for a student group to hold a cleanup and then raise money? You doing that?
Yeah, exactly. They, we, so we provide up to $5,000 a year. A student group can actually coordinate a cleanup and they'll receive a small portion of money to go to the fundraising aspect of it. So it's not necessarily volunteer, but they're volunteering their own time to then fundraise for their group.
Wow, that sounds kind of cool. Okay, well, I, those are my questions for now. I have to look back at my notes on the first section. They're a very dense presentation today. Thanks, Mr. Latchford. Ms. Nedden, did I see you pop on with questions on the presentations today?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Some technical difficulties today. So can you hear me? Yes, okay. So I just had a couple of questions. One question has come up with COVID and people being at home more and using more water. And I think they're finding that some of their bills are much higher than normally when they were working out in the world more. And is there any relief or anything that, I know we've maybe touched on this at Water Commission, I do have a couple of questions about sort of water usage. And then we're in this extraordinary conservation and that's really how we make our water budget. But just for people right now who are at home and if those rates have gone up, if there's anything on that front for any income levels.
Councilmember Nedden, that is something that I believe our financial analyst is working on with Water Commission is some relief programs. In terms of the at-home water usage, you know, we've sort of seen a slight increase in residential and a decrease in commercial, especially if we've, we've had, you know, a lot of open and closed, open and close. But it's essentially just a few more toilet flushes a day generally, which isn't going to be a big impact. What we typically see right around now in October is actually irrigation. It's the very hot, windy September and people's irrigation systems increasing. So the, the checkup program is always available to help people analyze their water usage and see where they might be able to, to save on their bills and their water usage.
Thank you. And then I just have sort of a general question, but I, you know, I learned about some new programs just watching this. It's so phenomenal, all that you do and we do and just how we get the message out so that people know about all of these things. Like, like for instance, the gray water, and I know that's been around, but both of those programs, the, you know, laundry to landscape and shower to flower systems. And how, how, if somebody wanted to do that, say, I want to do that right now, how, where do I go and where do I find this information?
So we have a great webpage, sanabarbarca.gov/graywater. We've got a lot of resources on there. We also have a sample plot plan so people can start, you know, comparing the gray water guidance to what they have on site. There is state legislation in terms of the plumbing code. So we have documents on there in terms of you need to really meet these requirements to have it permit-free. And then we also have our simple, you know, streamlined way to get something permitted. There are a few exceptions, like pumps, storage, things along those lines. If people are having a more complicated site, then it is going to need a permit. So we have a real detailed packet in terms of how to get something like that permitted. And we work, work with them and sort of hold their hand through it. And then in terms of the, the education opportunities, we really encourage the 101 classes. We do have the webinar recorded so people can watch the recording. And hopefully we'll be able to get back to doing hands-on workshops, but that's a real close knit inside someone's house. So we haven't been doing the hands-on gray water workshops during COVID.
Great. Councilmember Nedden, I just wanted to add on to what Ms. Wood said. We did create the Sustainability Website that we presented to this committee a few months back. And that website, though it really is centered around the current divisions in the Sustainability Department, also does highlight the work that the Water Conservation Team is doing and Transportation and Urban Planning. So you can link off to all of those sites from that sustainability.sanabarbarca.gov.
Excellent. I just love that website. It's so cheerful and informative. Thank you. And then just one more question about electric vehicles and charging. And I, I mean, I think it really is a big issue downtown and a lot of rentals and where, even if you have parkings with your rental unit, you know, where would you plug in? And a lot of apartment buildings don't allow that. And you sort of touched on it, but if, if you could just give us an update on sort of the thinking of where that might go or what even might be a solution to that?
Yeah, I, I don't want to steal Mr. Haflan's thunder. That's the next presentation is in-depth on the, the electric vehicle master plan and the, the plan we have in place right now. So we are thinking about that. You know, the multifamily and low-income units present a particular challenge. And Mr. Haflan's done a lot of thinking around how to get around that. And so I'll let him touch on that in the next presentation.
All right, so we'll hold our horses on that one, looking forward to that presentation. Ms. Harmon, did you have questions on the items that have been presented as part of this? Item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So grateful for that update. Ms. Parento, would we then move to the next item on the agenda? Thanks to you for all your good work.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been busy, all of us. So if we could go back to the electric vehicle update, that would be a great place to go next.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and his team council members. We have an update today for the planning around electric vehicles that the Sustainability Reserve Department has been undergoing. Next slide. So today was to give a little bit more background on electric vehicles. We'll talk about our, what we're calling our Zero Emission Vehicle Action Plan and update on the city's EV chargers and programs. Next slide.
Mr. Haflan, can, can I stop you? Because I forgot to ask for public comment on the other item. But maybe someone would have flagged Mr. Moen before you started, so, but I.
At this time, no one had any, no hands raised for public comments, which is one of the reasons I didn't stop you. But, uh, so there was, there was no, uh, no public comment at this time for that last item.
All right, well, I'm going to trust in you next time then. And sorry to interrupt your flow, sir. Please go ahead.
No problem at all. So a little bit of background, transportation is a very large source of emissions in the city of Santa Barbara, as it is in the state and in the country. But it's even more so important in the city of Santa Barbara. We don't have the large agriculture or industrial sectors that you see throughout the rest of the state. So it does comprise over half of our emissions in the city. Next slide. And so this has already been identified as one of the key attributes of our goal of how we get to carbon neutrality is electrifying our transportation along with active transportation and decarbonizing other sectors as well. There are unavoidable car trips that need to happen. So active transportation alone won't get us there. Santa Barbara Clean Energy is going a long ways to decarbonizing our electricity, which makes it even more important, even more impactful to electrify the transportation sector. Next slide. And as we can see, the market is really ramping up electric vehicles. This is a grassroots Santa Barbara sales of electric vehicles alone, which very much mirrors the states. There are state orders and lots of money being put into infrastructure within the state incentives within the state and the county and the region. So the, the whole market is really ramping up quite quickly. Next slide, please. At the same time, costs are dramatically reducing. So battery costs, vehicle costs are dramatically reducing. And there's an incredible amount of new models being introduced into the market sector, either now or in the very near future. Next slide. And a few years ago, plug-in hybrids were very much on par with battery electric vehicles. But in recent years, battery electric vehicles that do not have internal combustion engine are rapidly overtaking the plug-in hybrids that have both the batteries and the internal combustion engines. Electricity prices per mile traveled are generally around a quarter of the cost compared to gasoline. And the maintenance costs are much lower, which all combined is actually making electric vehicles cost competitive or cheaper than their internal combustion engine alternatives. Next slide. And it's just a brief refresh on the different types of chargers. There's the level one charging, uh, which is your standard, uh, outlet at home, the 110. There's level two chargers, which is what is in the granada garage and the other facilities around town. That is standardized plugin gives you about 14 to 40 miles of range per hour. And then there are fast chargers, otherwise known as DC fast chargers or DCFC, which are very rapid and can charge your battery to, to run 80% of its charge in 20 to 30 minutes. Um, traditionally, this was two different types of heads that you would have to plug into, um, the CCS and the Chadmo. But recently the industry has, um, standardized on the CCS moving forward. And then there is kind of outlier Tesla, which has their own proprietary heads and proprietary chargers. Next slide. And so talking around the zero emission vehicle action plan, um, next slide. We'll get into our efforts. Cities, uh, throughout the country and with throughout the region have been developing roadmaps, action plans and readiness plans because there really is a need for jurisdictions to help plan for this and provide support for this transition as it happens, both for the public and for its own municipal fleets. Next slide. So the, the tenants around this plan is to really identify what is the role of the city to play in this transition and really look for the gaps that the private sector is not filling in and organic growth is not helping to support. And so that can be places where there's very high density and there's disadvantaged sectors, commuter and transit hubs, places of high retail activity, multi-unit family residential developments, um, and really any hard to reach sector that really isn't being serviced by organic growth. And then identifying funding and critical pathways to get the city to where it wants to be to help support those. And then not looking outwardly, but inwardly, how do we really plan for our own fleet that we have direct control over? Next slide. So it's going to assess what the current market trends and technology is, which is moving very rapidly. It'll identify barriers to adoption. It'll identify mechanisms to support equitable swift adoption, determine some of those ancillary benefits that are always immediately visible for the electrification of transportation. It's going to offer recommendations on policy programs. It'll help and form our fleet or electrification roadmap, which will kind of be happening at the same time in conjunction with fleet to, to make sure that we're properly planning for our fleet's future. Next slide. And so 20 years ago, this was an extremely nascent technology, very much outlier. Next slide. If you look at where we've come in 20 years, um, we have the first, uh, hybrid fire engine in LA County at the top right there. All sorts of different types of vehicles that are starting to be electrified and decarbonizing the transportation sector. Next slide. There really is, you know, every vehicle type and every use case that is in different stages of its availability on the market and its cost competitive. So this is something where when we're looking at transportation electrification, really have to look at each individual use case and class and see what the costs are, where the market is, where the support is and what kind of needs there are for that sector. And what barriers there are for that sector to get that adoption. Next slide. So looking at the different markets that are going to be using, um, these vehicles, we typically think of single-family homes that people have their personal vehicles. There are a great deal of apartments and condos in Santa Barbara as well. There's manufactured home, mobile home developments. There's people that don't live here, but work here, ID commuters. Um, a lot of visitors and tourists, rideshare, um, people that are either a fleet or have their own personal vehicle that they're using for rideshare. A, a varying degree of commercial vehicles and then recreational vehicles as well, you know, anything from RVs to this electric boat that you see in Monica being charged. Um, and your various fleets, which really do vary dramatically in the type of vehicle and the size of the fleet. Next slide. And so really, you know, these barriers to adoption could be anything from the cost of the vehicle or charger or the infrastructure, which in and of itself can be a much greater barrier than those two, depending on your location. Of access to chargers, which I think as mentioned earlier, is a, is a big challenge for multi-unit developments and renters. And then your infrastructure and your capacity at your site. There's also a lot of education that goes into people using a new technology in that shift. There's also a lot of information and education around the technology of where the tech, where the market is currently in battery degradation, fuel fill times, um, battery composition. And really this is changing every few months. And so it's hard to keep up. It's hard for people to know what truth is about what the current technology is. So there's a lot of, uh, ability there to change people's mindsets. Next slide. And with everything we look at, we have to look at everything with an equitable lens of how do we consider, um, equity and how are our planning efforts for the city? The left is the state AD 1550, um, then designated low income tracks, census tracts, which comprises most of our lower downtown area, lower east side and lower west side. On the right is a, a map of housing burden by census tracts as well, which is quite high in the very similar area. Next slide. And here we look at, um, some maps also from California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment for asthma rates, which tend to be very high right near the freeway and traffic density as well, um, which are also key indicators. So these are all things that are affected by the transportation in our city and transportation sector. Next slide. And so we really have to consider, you know, those fence-like communities that are directly adjacent to those high emission locations for health hazards. The opportunities are low to moderate income disadvantaged communities, individuals with limited access to capital. They may only be looking at used vehicle market, which might not be fully baked yet for electric vehicles. Owners of buildings that have a split incentive and have no incentive to actually install infrastructure to help people, um, charge and support the transformation. And the advantages of resilience. Next slide. So the value of electrifying transportation really has a lot of different facets to it. We'll have greener cities. It helps the, the energy grid tremendously with optimized energy systems. Um, in currently, it also is a more cost-effective method for many of the use cases of cheaper mobility. Next slide. And so the, the electric, excuse me, zero emission vehicle action plan is going to have a number of recommended or possible policies at the kind of conclusion and a lot, and some of his likely policies might be banning public chargers, um, supporting private investment in public chargers, piloting city employee EV charging programs, providing equitable access to charging, streamlining permitting, spending fleet adoption and piloting new use cases, providing equitable incentives and leveraging available incentives that are out there. And that alone, there is a tremendous amount of incentives that are constantly changing in the sector. Next slide. So next steps, we're going to continue with, um, stakeholder outreach, really make sure that we're addressing the issues that people have with, um, the transformation and collaborate with the, the different affected city departments and how it would affect their employees and their fleet vehicles and their operations. They're developing draft the zero emission vehicle action plan for review and then have a, a final plan planned for the spring and summer of 2022. Next slide. Excuse me for a moment. So that, those are our planning efforts really kind of more of a broad scale around how the city will support the, the transition towards a transportation electrification. For a few minutes, I want to talk about electric vehicle charging stations specifically. So next slide. So the city has to date, um, offered quite a few electric vehicle charging stations, installed them for both, um, fleet usage and for public usage. So really started in plenty efforts in 2012, um, where we installed eight to eight ports or four stations in 2014. Um, and it has evolved over the year through grant funds in order to add to the, um, the chargers that are available to help support the industry. Currently we have 72 electric vehicle charging stations, 52 which are public. Um, and there is, um, kind of on the docket in planning phases of one to two family EV charger on-demand permit to make it easier for single families to get, um, permitting. And we do have about 18% of our light duty fleet within the city is currently an electric vehicle or hybrid vehicle. Next slide. So we have quite a few, like I said, quite a few vehicles. Um, the goal currently fleet is 63 vehicles to electrify by 2025. Really explore, um, which vehicles are eligible for the transition. The police station just purchased a Mustang Mach-E, which is on order for them to pilot an electric vehicle. Um, and fleet is developing electric, um, vehicle roadmap or electrification roadmap as well and use those planning efforts. Next slide. This is a map of our current publicly available, uh, EV charging stations. There are also two that are not on this out at the airport. They're predominantly at our surface lots in our public parking garages. Next slide. And then this is a graph of our, uh, electricity dispensed on our chargers today. So this goes back about 10 years. And you can see the rapid uptick in recent years, um, even though there was a downtick, um, when COVID started, you see the continues to rise. And that was even higher than it was two years ago. A lot more usage at the stations and there's a lot more demand. Next slide. We also have two, um, EV parking permit programs, pilot programs. One is a commuter permit with 24/7 permit, um, that have had good, been received very well as well. And those are at the granada garage where we have the predominant amount of our charges. Next slide. As was alluded to earlier, we do have the Santa Barbara Clean Energy Programs that launched, which also, um, give an incentive for, uh, button, uh, bolts and used EVs and plug-in hybrids. Next slide. We do have the project at the granada or Taker Garage, um, which Tesla will be putting in 12 superchargers, three level two chargers, and we'll be providing the city with service that we can put in for fast chargers of our own. Next slide. Those will be the first fast chargers that the city will offer. One of the things that came about this summer, when we started to look into the EV action plan or planning was there were a large amount of brands that were coming up to apply for very rapidly. So in the late summer or early fall, we put our name on, uh, list for the VW mitigation trust fund monies, which is $5 million to install EV chargers throughout California at no cost to the recipients. We're so ready to hear back on that project. We applied to over a million dollars of funding to the California Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Project, um, or Cal E D I P for 13 sites to put in about 130 chargers. We also applied to the Santa Barbara Air Pollution Control District for clean air grant for $250,000. And we have additional opportunity to apply through, uh, program through Southern California Edison for their charge-ready program. And so we have been awarded our first funds with $160,000 to install four fast chargers at our Tiki Garage. We do anticipate a good amount more of this funding to come through. Probably not everything, but a good amount of the funding should come through to help assist in putting in infrastructure and chargers at different locations throughout the city. Next slide. So when looking at the different facilities, we're looking at really where are the, the places where we needed the most need and we had to make some very quick decisions in order to get these applications set. So due to the very short time crunch, we really looked at city-owned facilities for now. Um, we looked at transportation hubs, destination hotspots, locations near apartment buildings, mugs and rentals to really help support that group, which is a very hard-to-reach group. Um, the community resources such as shopping centers, schools and houses of worship seemed like it was just too fast of a time track to really create that coordination effort and that partnership in order to apply for this round of funding. Or there's still a lot of opportunity in the future to work with those places in the future to make sure that we get equitable access to all. We also looked into curbside charging, which has been piloted in a few other, um, cities throughout the country and the world. Um, we actually had our interest this summer and went into this a little bit further and do more research and some outreach. There is some potential there. There's also a lot of barriers, a lot of challenges that some of the other jurisdictions have had when they tried to pilot this. There'd also be a lot of coordination efforts we would need to make ourselves in the city, um, to make sure that this would work properly. We overload our building safety staff. But right now we put this on the back burner and not something to apply for funding for at the immediate time, but it's still under consideration. Next slide. This is a map of all the public chargers in, um, Santa Barbara. It is a bit deceptive because many of these are Tesla only and most of these are actually at hotels and only for hotel. Residents, people are staying at the hotel. Next slide. This is a matrix of the charging stations that we've applied for funding currently, um, and are waiting to hear back. It is 138 different sites that we're proposing to put in, to be 138 ports that are looking to putting charging stations at 13 different sites throughout the city. It would be a mixture to support the public, city employees and the fleet electrification. Next slide. There are three sites identified with the airport staff that would help support their employees and the public that uses the airport. Next slide. And then there were 10 sites and 104 chargers that were identified as prime locations to apply for funding for in Santa Barbara itself. What you're seeing here is the blue dots are places that would have level two and fast chargers. The yellow dots are places that would just have level two chargers, so a little bit slower. And then the two purple dots are actually places that the private industry is either currently or in permit planning for, um, putting in their own fast chargers that would be publicly available. So that's something we're trying to keep on track of as well as where is the public sector providing services for the public. Next slide. And then we do have at the fleet, um, some level two and fast chargers proposed to help support specific vehicles that are planned for the expansion in the fleet of the electric vehicles and to help support, um, multi, multiple use cases. So they could pilot different use cases of different types of vehicles through those fast chargers because they can charge very quickly and they get another vehicle in there to charge afterwards. Next slide. So these would really help support city residents and workers, local businesses, tourists or low to moderate income and disadvantaged communities where most of our proposed chargers are proposed to be located, rental units, um, people in apartment buildings and manufacturing mobile home development residents. We did prioritize transportation hubs, um, and really aimed at achieving carbon neutrality goals, um, through our fleet electrification as well. Next slide. Uh, in 2019, City Council did standardize on ChargePoint chargers. Um, we looked into over eight, I want to say nine or 10 different electric vehicle supply companies to partner with. And at the end of the day, uh, ChargePoint really was the one that would offer us the best deal and the best, um, integration into what the city really wants to do. Um, it is something that we've been working with their dashboard, with their company the last 10 years and they've had good relationship with them. I think it will be the best solution for the city to stay with them. Next slide. So our staff is working with ChargePoint and a potential partner that would be able to, um, take over, take the role of doing the installation of and operations of these proposed chargers. This would be quite many key features to the city, um, that'd be very beneficial. So by having one company that would do the, um, own install and maintain the chargers, it would really by having one company that would do the own installing and maintain the chargers, it would really alleviate any needs from the city to provide that maintenance of both on a cost and time basis for the city. They would be proposing to eliminate what we're currently paying for networking fees and maintenance fees for those chargers. On these new chargers, they'd agree to keep our charging rates low for the public. They wouldn't be gouged at the pump or at the charger, if you will. And they're willing to really support all of our use cases that we're looking to support. So both fleet employee and our public access chargers in all the different communities that we're looking to support and build from the same network and dashboard that we're currently using. That's like. And so our next steps are to draft an ordinance for proposed contact with the EV charger supplier and partner for our charger expansion. Develop an employee EV charging pilot program that's going to work for all the affected members of our staff. Continue working on our zero emission vehicle action plan with outreach and development of our draft. Continue working with building, building safety to explore streamlining permitting options and explore new ways to support our mud and community charger installs. Next slide. And with that, I know there's a lot of information condensed in a very small time. I'll pay questions.
Sure. Thank you. Really appreciate your work and presentation. I think this is the first time I've seen you, Mr. Hofflin. So excellent. Questions from our council members, Ms. Nedden? Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was an incredible presentation and update. And first of all, I really like your background and your green wall with the logo on there. It's really nice. But I do have some questions about the charging stations. So let's see. My first one was for the final outcome on the Granada Garage, once it's all in place, is that a hundred percent all electric vehicle charging or some of those spaces are or aren't? Are they all Tesla or some combination? If you could just tell me but once it's complete, what's the mix there?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. Setting the mix. At conclusion of this, of the current chargers are again installed will be twelve Tesla superchargers, which Tesla will install and operate. Three level two chargers that Tesla will install and operate. And four fast chargers at the city for this use partner will install and operate all for the public.
And so there will still also be regular stalls that aren't, that doesn't add up to the total number of stalls in the Granada Garage or?
Yeah, I do not know the exact count. I believe it's several hundred in the parking garage, but yes.
No, that's okay. So I was just wondering if it was all of them or not all of them. And then?
That's a matter of members, and if I can just weigh in, it's actually a very small portion of the total garage. And just to clarify, it's the Ortega Garage on the corner of Ortega and Anacapa for that one. And it's, it's a, it's probably not even ten percent of the parking.
Okay, thank, and thank you for clarifying that. I was picturing a different garage in my head. And, and so is there potential then to expand? So once those are in, if we did want to keep expanding that, there would be room to keep expanding in those locations. Just want to confirm.
So specifically, I apologize for my speaking about Ortega Granada Garage. And Ortega Garage, one of the limiting factors there is the capacity through Southern California Edison's distribution system. And so the current amount of capacity that's being brought in by Tesla at their cost that they're providing us access to for our four fast chargers would be maxed out for the immediate term unless we got future upgrades and future service from this.
Thank you. And then for the MTD for the electric shuttles now that, and you might not know this answer, but it just occurred to me as you were, as you were showing the charging for that at the MTD station, that now that they're not being used for waterfront shuttles, I'm seeing them around town for other uses. And I'm just curious how much that offsets, and maybe it's not an answer for today, but how much that might be offsetting, you know, previous gas use or if that's helping with the MTD sustainability on, on that. But I've seen them around town and it seems like a new, a new usage, yeah, to be able to use them beyond the shuttle. Yeah. So is this a question about that?
The council member, so if I can step in real quick, I think that would be a great update to bring back to this committee for a couple of reasons. One, you're absolutely right. That is offsetting some internal combustion engine usage, but also the, the city is partnering with MTD on a big grant that they got to electrify their headquarters in preparation to electrify all of their bus fleet. So we are participating with that. And I think that would be a really nice project to bring back to your committee when we have a few more answers. We're just beginning that process.
Great. Thank you. Cause I remember when I was liaison for the MTD board, that was a big topic of updating that grid and how much storage and how far a vehicle could go. Our bus could go with that chart. Excellent. That would be, that would be great. And that this is really just as a comment, this is really next level, what we're talking about here and what you're presenting about truly being a grid that, that, you know, when you add the bikes and the buses and the transport and the vehicles, the cars, that, that it's, it's really getting there so that it's it's really exciting, possible. I have a question about for ChargePoint. Is there anything like that it can change the rate structure either throughout the day or depending on who it is, who's logging on or not? Like, I know for instance, at, at City College, ChargePoint is free for employees up till a certain time of day. And then after a certain time of day, it, it goes for a different rate and that rate changes. Do we, are we have any plans or consideration of that with our rates like for employees or commuters or residents who live in apartments and have waived? I don't know, whatever, whatever the incentives might be, is, is there possibility for that with ChargePoint?
Councilmember said, excellent question. With our current ChargePoint chargers, we do have the opportunity to set our own rates. And we do on most of them have time of use rates that are more expensive when the energy front, the rate is more expensive and that helps support a more robust and resilient energy grid to, to pass it along. So you don't have people charging at peak usage when it's most detriment to the grid. And certainly is something we would, we're looking to have in a new contract that we have that we would be able to continue with that and continue with low charging rates as well. We can charge different types of users, different prices. So if a fleet vehicle wanted to charge at a public station, we could have that as a lower rate than what the public sees. So that is an opportunity for employees, fleet and public vehicles for us to set those rates.
That would be great, I think, just to have different incentives for employees. And I think that'd be fantastic. So just for my two cents there. And then I guess I would just add, I think like one of the limiting factors for me, if I'm driving far and need to plug in and charge, is that so many charging stations are in like the dark backs of malls or places that aren't, there's not a lot of foot traffic or people passing by and you're left trying to decide whether to sit in your car with it plugged in when you couldn't drive away if you needed to, or you get out and go where? So I just think when you're talking about equity, I'm sure you're giving that thought, but it's, it'd be nice too if, if people driving through were able to find a safe, accessible, well-lit and then be able to maybe spend their time at a, at a local restaurant or something to, to actually spend their money while they're in Santa Barbara charging up on their road trip. So I'm sure you're giving all that thought, but that's just my, my perspective on that. When I'm trying to charge up, it's sometimes hard to find a station that's welcoming and safe and well-lit. And just really exciting, really, really excited about this whole program. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Questions? Any other, any other questions before we check for public comment, Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I may be, sorry, the lighting is really horrible. I'm jumping the gun a little bit. I just wanted to say I've, I've taken a ton of notes and learned a lot. And I, I also am really excited. I'm so sorry. I'm, we're not doing comments right now, but I'll just finish by saying really appreciated the, the clear focus on equity and access, particularly for renters. That was really fantastic to hear for those of us downtown. And just my thanks. So apologies. I forgot about public comment as well. So thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Harmon. I don't have questions. So let's see if anyone's raising their hand there in GoToWebinar.
We do have one person raising their hand. Katie Davis. If you could go ahead and unmute.
Hi, thank you so much. Katie Davis, Sierra Club. Just really appreciate the Sustainability Committee and these great updates. This is really interesting. I also appreciate the emphasis on renters and accessibility. And I just wanted to add to Councilmember Seddon's comments about making sure that charging stations are accessible and because the, the other, the other issue that I see is people who are not tech savvy seniors as EVs become more mainstream. One issue with charging stations, in addition to just being kind of hard to find and in the back of things, there's sort of a lack of signage. So if, you know, if we could have signage outside of the parking garage noting that there is EV charging there, so you don't have to have a, an app to find it and be, you know, savvy and in seeking these out. And then also you have to join a lot of different networks and that can be really hard for people too. I know a lot of seniors are struggling with this. So to the extent you can look for charging stations that allow you to just easily pay, you know, maybe just with a credit card without having to join yet, you know, yet another network. So that's just another thing to keep in mind is just ease, ease of use and access and ability to find them for people who are less, less savvy with apps. Thank you so much for this great update.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We appreciate that. Anyone else raising their hands?
At this time, that was the only hand raised. So nobody else.
Thank you. Mr. Moen, would you go back? There's a, a slide that I wanted to make my comments on. It was and we'll close public comment. It had that the drive times were longer and costs were going down and that was just really heartening. And maybe Mr. Hofflin, you know, the, yeah, there it is, the number. So this just looks, this is the good news part, right? That the driving ranges are increasing, prices are dropping. And it has to be affordable for people and become more mainstream. I appreciate what Ms. Davis was saying about friendly in terms of technology for older people. So those are my comments. I'm really proud of what we're up to and especially your good work, sir. So thank you. Any other, any other comments? I think people have already expressed their, their support and thanks. So we will look forward to the next update. We'll look forward to these projects being implemented. Ms. Parento?
Sorry, I was just jumping on for the next item. We only have five minutes, but I couldn't provide a very quick.
Yeah, let's go. Okay, good. Thanks. So resilience hubs. Thank you.
Yeah. So very, very quickly, I wanted to give you an update because we've been working pretty hard on resilience hubs and how we might bring some to Santa Barbara. So next slide please. I'm really, really quickly, what are they? They're multifaceted centers that really help our community better adapt to climate change and to respond to disasters when they happen. And the really the central tenants of these is they rely upon community trust cohesion in our social networks and equity. So really serving the frontline communities. Next slide please. And what they do is they really are augmented community serving facilities that can support residents in a time of disaster, really throughout the year, depending on how you program them. You can coordinate communication and information, distribute resources, whether that's food, water, devices, really anything, first aid. You can build community networks and really get neighborhoods to, to gel even better. Provide access to clean air and cooling centers and some of the other really hazards that our community faces. Next slide please. And so why are they important? Well, they really build community capacity, right? So in a disaster, people need resources, they need information and they need support. And so that's what these strategically placed centers can provide. They need to be, you know, concentrated in areas where the, the need is greatest and they should be locations that are known for providing resources. So we tend to want to look at community centers, maybe churches and other places of worship or other places that people go to for some of that community benefit. Next slide please. So we have actively been looking into how we might establish some of these centers and build up on those community resource centers I talked about in the first presentation. And so we're working as a region through our climate collaborative membership of which the city is a steering committee member to, I really identify key sites that are strategically placed throughout our region. So we're looking at location and what types of communities they serve. We're looking at existing energy assets at a particular facility. So that in, in terms of energy assets, I mean, their ability to go off-grid if possible, so batteries and solar. And we're also looking at community ownership of locations. So going back to that trust and where people already know to get information and resources, those are really a great starting point for establishing a resilience hub. The regional team that's looking at this sort of mapping of hubs includes the county, the various cities around the county, both North and South County, schools, places of worship and nonprofits that are supporting a lot of the work. Next slide please. So we've applied as a collaborative for funding to a variety of funding sources and the funding, if received, would help us establish what is a resilience hub? What do we want it to be for our community and what are the needs that we have here specifically? And then, and then in order of operations to design, implement and maintain these resilience hubs. We are planning on establishing two pilot sites if we receive the funding. So one in North County, one in South County. They have not been established yet. But they would receive funding to really have a resilience hub design. Next slide please. And money is coming. This is really, I had nothing to say for this, except that there's fifteen billion dollars allocated to climate initiatives and a lot of that is related to resilience hubs specifically. And so we're really trying to prepare ourselves to go after that money. That's where that design of resilience hubs that I just was talking about is really important because we'll be able to really turn that around and apply for specific funding to implement. Next slide please. And then that was it. So that was a really quick update. I know there had been some questions about resilience hubs and I wanted to make sure you knew we were working on it. If you have any specific direction for us related to resilience hubs, we'd love to hear it because this is really the planning time right now.
I, I think we should just end on fifteen billion dollars. So just, I'm kidding. Okay, Ms. Nedden, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I do both questions and comments or really just comments? Or do we have public comment first?
Go ahead and do both.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I could not be more excited about this. As, as you know, this is something that first after the debris flow and those first meetings when the power wasn't still on and there were all the meetings up at Montecito Union and the discussion about resilience hubs, really that was the first I, first time I heard that term. And that was the first time talking about microgridding and all the possibilities of that. And it's really exciting. I'm so excited. They were even having a formal conversation about this. And as you know, I've been in conversations with Peabody Charter School, with the school board, with CEC. And I really see this as what we need for our whole community. It's one of the whole reasons I really believe in the Sustainability and Resilience Department. I think this is just the way to go. And just to put a sorry, did I accidentally mute myself? Just to, just to put a, just a consideration that to, to keep, and, and I'm not sure if Peabody's on that list or not, but just to say here's some, and we've talked about this, but, but some of the benefits there that it's, it's, it's a charter school, it's centrally located as a neighborhood walking school. It has an industrial kitchen. It has wide area for solar, possible battery storage. And it's already a communication center for, you know, over fifty percent Spanish-speaking community, very active walking parent groups that would also could Walking parent groups that would also could could help with that disseminating that information. So just. We're going to keep that on the list as as someplace that could be. A pilot, but really anywhere. I'm just, I just can't be more excited that this is something we're officially looking at and and moving forward and just way to go. Thank you.
Very good. So for now, it's Louise Lowry Davis Center and Franklin Center that have been identified, right?
Those are the ones that were, sorry, I apologize, that were identified with Southern California Edison for their Community Resource Centers. The list in terms of. Resilience hubs, we're currently working with the East Side Library and the library staff to try and establish that as one as well. And then as Ms. Seddon said, several schools are on the list, including Peabody. And some other community centers around the area.
Thanks. If there's no other questions, we can see if there's members of the public wanting to speak. Mr. Moon.
This time there is no member of the public with their hand raised wanting to speak.
Okay, thank you. Anything, Ms. Harmon? It's been a great meeting. Really proud of our Sustainability and Resilience Department and all the good work we're doing. It feels like a crazy time with. Pandemic and. Climate change really manifesting and. The urgency that that I can certainly see in all of our good work. So thank you very much. We'll close this item and we'll adjourn our meeting. We don't have a date for the next one, but. Our partners will know when we're meeting again. Thanks again, staff and everybody and meeting adjourned.